All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, March 9, and I would like to ask you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask everybody to bear with us. We are back to using our pre-COVID system where we're touchscreen voting, and we're out of practice, so bear with us if we have some technical difficulties this evening. Item three on our agenda is our roll call. Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Elise?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Frogasines?
Here.
And Chair Nemeth? Here. We are all here. That is wonderful. That will bring us to item four, the review of our agenda, and we are also going to be moving item nine, our presentation item, to this point in our agenda. But Ms. Taggart?
So I will review the agenda first, and then we can go into the presentation. So we do have some memorandums that you did receive prior to the meeting tonight for items seven A, eight A, and eight B, mainly just typographical cleanup and then a edit for a condition of approval. And then for the presentation, as you all know, this is our chairwoman's last meeting. So Chairwoman, we would ask you to come around the front here. We have some items that we would like to present to you.
Stacia, oh, do you want to read this?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so let's read it. Whereas, Stacia Nemeth-
Name it or no?
Name it.
Oh, Lord.
Has served on the Planning Commission- Has served on the Planning Commission for the City of Palmdale from May 14, 2015 to March 9, 2023, during which she served as Chair of that distinguished body from February 11, 2016 until March 9, 2023. And whereas, while serving on the Planning Commission, Chair Nemeth helped approve comprehensive updates for the city's general plan and zoning ordinance, as well as the Palmdale Transit Area Specific Plan, specific plan amendments, and Anna Verde Nuevo and Rancho Vista, the entitlement of Phase One of Ritter Ranch, the multifamily, multimix design standards, the Avenue Q corridor study, and countless other development projects and issues of the community concern. And whereas, during her deliberation of these many development projects and policy issues, Chair Nemeth was vigorous proponent of improving residential development standards, equality and fairness, and all development and business types, and encouraged the application of all these design standards that improve the quality of life of the residents of this community. And whereas, Chair Nemeth was made a significant, positive, long-reaching contribution to the quality of life in the community through her deliberation of each development application and her dedication to achieve excellence in every project. And whereas, the City of Palmdale hereby extends its sincerest appreciation to Stacia Nemeth for the prominent role she played in achieving the goals of the community and bids farewell in all of her future endeavors. Now, therefore, on behalf of the entire City of Palmdale Planning Commission, hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this commendation to Stacia Nemeth and offer our best wishes for many happy and productive years in the future.
Thank you.
And- And there's an extra piece. And also, there's a nice little, well, which way is up? I don't know. Oh! We signed the back. Never forget, "Forget you are the piece that made the difference. Stacia Nemeth, thank you for your dedication, exceptional service, and leadership to the City of Palmdale Planning Commission, 2015 to 2023." And there's a little stand thingy for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, and, you know, I've served with many chairs, or multiple chairs in this position, and I always appreciate a chair that keeps that moving, that meeting moving, and makes everybody feel comfortable and that they were heard, and you did an excellent job with that, and I really appreciate that. I've worked for ones that, that I'm like, "Can we get going? Can we get going?" And you kept that thing going, and it was great. We really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
We have other- Picture time. Okay, so, we have presentations also from Assemblyman Juan Correio. Is there somebody here to present for Assembly? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Senator Scott Wilk, Office.
Good evening, Madam Chair. It's an honor to be here, and congratulations. So for you, I have a certificate from the California Senate. It is presented to Stacia correct, Nemeth. Stacia Nemeth, in recognition of your years of service as Chair of Palmdale Planning Commission, it is an honor to congratulate you on your service as Chair of the City of Palmdale Planning Commission. Thank you for your commitment and dedication to responsible development in the Anlo Valley. Your work on the city's general plan, design standards, and the Avenue Q complete streets is truly worthy of commendation. I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Signed this day, March 9, 2023. Senator Scott Wilk, the 21st Senate District.
Thank you very much.
All right, who's next?
All right, so it's Anna from Tom Lackey's office and Juan from Juan Correio's office. Anna, you're first.
That's right.
Elder goes first. So my name is Anna Zarli. I am a field rep for Assemblyman Tom Lackey, District 34. You don't know what it took for me to get here tonight. I was in Apple Valley, and I had an event at four o'clock. I finally got out of there at 5:30, and I raced. And I don't like to drive at the night, but just for you, because Stacia, you know, Stacia serves on a lot of boards. Stacia, I just want to say, thank you for all you do. Everybody can read all this good stuff, but I just want to say thank you from my heart, because we know that you care about the City of Palmdale, and we know that you actually care about the Anlo Valley, and you care about our veterans and you care about our citizens. So this is what we need more of, and so I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Anna.
Oh, I'm supposed to say, on behalf of Assemblyman Tom Lackey. Those are his words.
Stacia, okay, so, little story. I didn't know Stacia a couple of years ago, but I knew of her. And we were doing our Veterans Military Ball at that time, before I get to this, and I thought, wow, it'd really be cool if Stacia was part of it. And then the phone rang, and it was Stacia. And she said, hey, I understand you're having a ball. Can I be part of it? And I said, well, that's like, really cool. But the reason why I never called you is because for some reason, I was just terrified. You're such, you're such a commanding person. So congratulations. You have been an outstanding leader. I can't tell you how proud I am of you. She's actually been a mentor to me. She didn't realize it, but I would sit here and watch her do the chair, and I said, yeah, that's how you do this business. So thank you so much. So now I have to get back to the business at hand, which says, "Presented to Stacia Nemeth, in appreciation and recognition of your steadfast leadership on the Palmdale City Planning Commission," that's who you are. "On behalf of the California State Legislature and the residents of the 39th Assembly District, I congratulate and thank you for your contributions to the growth and development of the City of Palmdale. The legacy of your work for our community is immeasurable and appreciated." And this is on behalf of Juan Correio, your newest Assemblyman, and he wanted to say special thank you, because you are just so terrific. So thank you so much.
Photo time.
Hello, Stacia. Okay, well, I came to know Stacia through veterans. And of course, you know, she is the lead when it comes to veterans, because her event requires every veteran to attend, no matter what organization you're with. You will definitely end up at Stacia's Ranch. So on behalf, well, the other biggest thing is, is Stacia joined me when Edwards Air Force had their airshow. So I said, you know, you want to do this, it's three days, you have to be up at 4:00 a.m., you got to be at the gate at five, and ready to go until five o'clock in the afternoon. She says, when do I start? So that was great. So on behalf of Brigadier General Matthew Hager, and also Hildur Van Hooy, who is the Director of STEM, says for your outstanding support during the 2022 Aerospace Valley Airshow and STEM Expo, they thank you very much.
Okay, mic's on again. So now, another hat. As you know, we met during Coffee for Vets. This job is a new job. This is my old job. So on behalf of Coffee for Vets, Stacia Nemeth, the 412th Test Wing at Edwards Air Force Base Ash and STEM Expo. Coffee for Vets Incs cannot thank you enough for your dedication and faithful volunteerism to the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Program at Edwards Air Force Base during the 2022 Airshow by helping to serve more than 3,200 cups of coffee and hang a 1,600 over a three-day period in October 2022, awarded this ninth day of March.
You do not realize how much coffee people drink. All right, come on up here, team. It's the last time I can be the boss of you. And I am the boss of you right now.
You can't stand it, it's the big guy here. Dean, you want to stand?
I know. I was gonna-
Oh, yeah. Gavel, gavel. There you go.
No one was hurt by my gavel. Well, thank you all very much. That was very kind of you. Thank you. I want to say probably some of the, I've met some of the nicest, most intelligent people, very caring people in our community, and it has been a pleasure to be on the Planning Commission all these years. And I would say probably one of the most impactful things that I've seen accomplished in our city in my time here has been the veteran housing and the Course on Arts Colony, and seeing that actually come to fruition and provide some affordable housing for everybody. And I'm looking very forward to the new style of housing in Rancho Vista, hopefully that will be coming in the near future. But I want to thank each and every one of you. I know every first or second Thursday of the month, you've all been watching these meetings. It is like the highlight of your month, so I appreciate that. And now that we don't do Zoom anymore, you're all going to just have to come to the meetings and actually physically come and, and help these people out, give them your opinions, and, but I do appreciate you being here this evening, and I thank you all for your accolades and for thinking I did a good job. And now that I'm back up here chairing the meeting, I will apologize to all of you for that delay. That normally does not happen at my meetings. We would normally be almost done by right now. So I will now get on to item five. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
And this is the part we were talking about. Now we're waiting for the technology to catch up to the humans. We need that Jeopardy music.
There we go.
Okay, let the record show, we have a motion from Commissioner Frogasines and a second from Commissioner Elise. All votes are in. And the motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to our public comment portion of our meeting. If you are here to speak on an item that is not on our agenda or on our consent calendar, this is the time that you would come up and speak. If you're speaking on a public hearing item, that, there will be a special time for that coming up. At this time right now, public comments is for non-agendized items and our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes from last month's meeting. So is there anybody here for those categories? All right, and that will get us to our consent calendar. Item seven, may I please get a motion to approve the amended minutes from last month's meeting?
Did you push the button?
It's not giving me a-
No, on the bottom.
Oh, motion, duh.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Frogasines. And the motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to our first public hearing item, item eight A.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Okay. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. The project before you is for tentative parcel map eight three nine four zero and SPR or site plan review twenty-two dash zero one seven for Tate and Associates. The applicant's request is to subdivide approximately five acres into three lots for the purpose of constructing two restaurant buildings with drive-through facilities located at the northwest corner of Rancho Vista Boulevard and Town Center Drive. The map shows the three parcels, or this map shows the three parcels. Parcel one will contain the existing assisted living facility on the far right, and parcels two and three on the left will each contain one drive-through restaurant, a trash enclosure, parking, and landscaping. Each proposed lot meets or exceeds all minimum size requirements. Access to the proposed development will be through one existing driveway from Rancho Vista Boulevard. Internal circulation will be provided through the parking area and drive aisles throughout the project site area. The city engineer has reviewed the project and determined that it is designed with adequate access to accommodate safe vehicular flow. The upper rendering shows the east elevation for the building on parcel two, and the lower rendering shows the south elevation for the building on parcel three. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC 2023 dash zero zero six as amended, approving tentative parcel map eight three nine four zero and site plan review twenty-two dash zero one seven, and find that the project is consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and monitor, sorry, MMRP. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dominguez. Do any commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, I would like to ask city engineer, we have seen drive-through restaurants cause severe blockage in our parking lots, and just looking at this with two drive-through restaurants in a close proximity, and I understand that it's said that it's viable. I, what kind, what, how do you determine that, that it's a viable project with traffic, parking, flow?
I'm Jay Nelson, the city traffic engineer. We required the developer to do a queuing study where they actually did traffic counts at two similar fast food restaurants for these specific buildings. And then we made sure that the, these buildings would have that amount of parking plus some surplus to overflow what the other two did. One of the conditions we put on the project was they had to widen that drive aisle between the senior center that's parallel to Rancho Vista Boulevard by a few feet, so there was room for three lanes, so we could stack people up there. We did require them to put in two drive-through lanes instead of one. We've done things on the site to address that. So based on the study that was done and our review of the plans, we feel it would be adequate.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Nelson. Okay. If there are no other technical questions for staff, then I will open the public hearing on this item. If you are here to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. And it will not be a dialogue between us. You will get your three minutes, and if you have any questions, I will try to get them answered during our discussion time. Is there anybody here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here? Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Yes? No? I'll have him come forward. Could the applicant please come forward? I'm going to make Mr. Henderson ask you his question, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Chris Siz, First Street Development, the developer of the project, representing both applicant and the prospective tenants.
So we've got a kind of a tight parcel here, and this issue of the circulation for drive-throughs- And this issue of the circulation for drive-throughs has come up because we have a zoning ordinance update that's going to add spacing to it. And I'm sure what's prompted that is where we've got these impacts, where we have like In-N-Out Burger and Chick-fil-A, where the queues just go crazy out. Now, in looking at these two, so if the senior living center is parcel one, parcel two is restaurant... I don't know if it's restaurant number one or whatever you call it, and then the second restaurant. The parcel three circulation for the cars, it's... Did a great job because you've got two lanes of drive-through. And you can see you've got... You can put thirty cars in that queue.
Right.
And assuming, let's say they're running a promotion, they're saying, hey, go get whatever, whatever the promotion is. And fifty cars or a hundred show up. Where do they go? It's gonna look like, you know, In-N-Out Burger or whatever. And where's the overflow? We just imagine where would the overflow go. That parcel three looks like a pretty good job. You can pack a lot of cars in there, and when it overflows, it kind of goes into the parking lot, and it doesn't look like it's causing a big danger. Parcel one, however, it's got kind of an odd circulation. When the cars come in, they have to come in off of Rancho Vista Boulevard, come around the corner, and then right into the queue. And there's not really an overflow opportunity for the queue. You did make two... A little bit of a split queue going into the drive-through, but it adds like three extra car spaces as far as this diagram goes. But what the concern is, is what if fifty cars show up? Where do they go, you know? And it looks like maybe, I mean, they're gonna back up out onto Rancho Vista Boulevard, maybe. But initially, when I looked at it, I thought, you know, you need to flip it around and make the queue start at the north end. And then staff brought it to my attention that car windows are on the left side.
Unless you're in England.
Yeah. So that totally blew my recommendation for that. But that is my only... My concern is just where does this circulation go? When fifty cars show up for a promotion? That is gonna be the concern that's gonna also drive the push for having these five hundred feet or a thousand feet or whatever separation agreements for all drive-throughs moving forward.
Well, I think if I can address parcel two, for calling it.
Parcel two, which is the restaurant with the smaller drive-through.
Sure, sure. Parcel two, in fact, the representative line work might not be exactly in line with what that tenant's gonna be. That tenant is utilizing that solely as a pickup lane. There's no menu board. There's no ordering in that lane. So I think that even calling it a drive-through is a bit of a stretch. It's a pickup lane, and that should help alleviate many of those concerns.
Are you... Well, it's... I mean, on the diagram, it says menu board and canopy.
That's correct. That's incorrect.
Okay. So that's not a...
It's just representative imagery when we submitted it eight months ago, and it's since been adapted to not have that at all.
So it's... They're gonna be driving it to be a sit-down restaurant and not so much a drive-through?
That's right. It's a pickup lane only.
So they don't order there?
Correct.
And does that typically then reduce traffic through that?
The only people that'll go in there are people that have already ordered on their phone.
Really? Interesting.
There's a restaurant like that on the east side of Palmdale.
Really?
Chipotle. Chipotle on the east side of Palmdale is... You have to order on your phone.
And how does that... How do you see that circulation going? Is that... Are the lines lower and less lines and goes faster?
Yes. It's frustrating when you don't know that and you try to go through the drive-through. That's not a drive-through. And I speak from experience.
If you focus there, there's a lot of parking up there yet, right?
Yes.
Allowing that traffic to flow smoothly. So now, I know you're just talking about part two, right? So you're saying that this is only pickup only, and in another parcel, you're having an actual drive-through?
That's correct.
Parcel three did a great job. You can... I love the two lines in there. And if you look at, you know, what could happen, that overflow goes into the parking lot, and you can see lots of opportunities for the overflow to have places to go.
Agreed. It's a fantastic layout.
It's just parcel two is my concern.
Yes.
And I know when we talked about this zoning ordinance changes with the distance, what I said at that point was, we need... Really need to focus on specific projects to make sure circulation's gonna work rather than trying to make a huge distance separation, which means you would not have been able to put these two restaurants together in the new zoning ordinance. So now, you're telling us that this is pickup only, but sometimes that can change. So what are the chances or odds, or I mean, could that change a year from now? And you're like, oh, you know what? We decided to change it, and now it's a drive-through.
I don't... I don't think that that is in anybody's game plan at this point.
And is there a conditional use permit that specifically says it's for pickup only and not a... Is that in the conditions of the conditional use permit to say pickup only, not order?
Staff wasn't aware that it was being changed from a drive-through facility to a mobile pickup window? So no, there's no specific condition of approval related to that.
Okay, so that's my only concern. I mean, otherwise, again, you did a fantastic job on parcel three. Parcel two is my only concern. And just, I guess with staff, just on projects when they come with these, that's going to always be my concern is, where do the cars go if fifty show up one day? And that can happen. It happens at Chick-fil-A all the time.
It's not a Chick-fil-A.
I gotcha. Okay. That's all I have to say then. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, and I have a speaker form for Iman Yunan. Please come forward. And you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. So I actually live over there, right next to the assisted living. And as a resident of that area, we are already feeling congested just having Jack in the Box across the street and having two other drive-through. With the assisted living, we love them. They are doing very good job. They are quiet. They are organized people. But even for us to have insurance for our own homes, it's very difficult at that area because we're very near the hills. So honestly, I have concerns about safety as of fires, food hazards, rats, cleaners, congestion in that road, beside the fact that we have as well multiple schools, elementary and middle schools. So I feel it's way too much as a resident for us to have so many in such a small space. So I don't know if you guys please consider that as a resident. I see it's not easy for us having just back-to-back near a fast food restaurant. What about two of them and having Jack in the Box across the street? I think it's too much. So I would really appreciate you guys considering that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yunan. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? All right, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and ask for either a motion or a discussion. All right. Commissioner Alvarez?
So in previous projects, has there been a preventive study of traffic flow in that area?
Not. So we can get a clear picture on, as Mr. Henderson stated, on where does the traffic go on the future project? And how do we handle that? What has past practice taught us to control traffic in a project like this? How do we get that information on previous restaurants that are built similar to this to control the traffic as a result of this project? Can... If anyone can help me with that, or maybe we can do some research on that. But otherwise, as Mr. Henderson said, parcel three is great, great layout. And I'm only going by vigil in my head on how it is right now. And again, it's not Chick-fil-A, but when one goes to that area, the minute you get off that freeway, there's traffic, or there's only one entrance going into that area that carries out because of Chick-fil-A and surrounding businesses. I'm pro-business, but I believe in the interest of safety and growth. We... I would love to see a past practice study of how we can control traffic flow as the new businesses come in.
Sure, so I will say this, and I'll let our city traffic engineer chime in as well. We look at each drive-through facility on a case-by-case basis, and we do have development standards in our code specific to different types of drive-through establishments that indicate a minimum number of queuing and general design of those areas. But we do look at each restaurant or use on a case-by-case basis. And if it seems like that particular use causes more queuing than what the code requires, then we ask them to submit a queuing study that they analyze several other locations that are similar in nature so that they can demonstrate that whatever queuing they're proposing is sufficient to accommodate that use.
And then based on the new ordinance, I'm not clear what... I know it was suggested five hundred feet between every drive-through restaurant that we're producing. What role would that play in this particular project since they have one pickup and one drive-through?
Right, so there's a couple of things on this one. This is within a specific planned area, so it's governed by its own development standards. And the zoning update has not yet gone to city council. So once it's adopted by city council, it will be effective thirty days after that. So application... Or this application would not be subject to the requirements of that update.
Okay. That's all I have.
You're off the hook, Mr. Nelson. Okay. If there is no further discussion, I would like to say, Ms. Yunan, I appreciate and understand your concern, and we are doing our best to live by our general plan as well as our zoning ordinances. And these both fall legally and ethically within those. So what we're going to hope is that they are well-designed. From the picture, I see they're well-designed. Let us hope that you stick to the pickup only. And I would say my big concern is just the one entrance at Rancho Vista. That's kind of a concern to me. But I know it has been widened, and you did say that you did all of those modifications to make it more amenable. So with that being said, is there anybody who would like to make a motion on this item?
I will make a motion. To approve... Oh!
As amended.
As amended. Oh, shoot. That's eight-eight. Sorry about that. We were so concentrated on that technology and forgot to go to the wording. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number PC 2023 dash oh oh six, approving tentative parcel map TPM eight three nine four oh and site plan review SPR twenty-two dash oh seventeen, and find that the project is consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program as amended. And that's my motion.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Frogasains.
Begin voting. Votes are in.
Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for being here. If you are not here for any other items, we are not offended if you leave the meeting right now. And that will bring us to item eight B.
Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is tentative parcel map eight three nine eight four, conditional use permit twenty-two dash fourteen, and site plan review twenty-two dash twenty, but submitted on behalf of Sage and Mesco. I do want to note that you did receive a memo, and it was regarding minor typos related to dates and parcel dimensions. The project before you is a request to subdivide ten acres into eight lots for the purpose of constructing three buildings totaling eleven thousand three hundred and five square feet located at the northwest corner of Palmdale Boulevard and Fifth Street West. So the first phase of the construction will include one drive-through pad for a restaurant use. The second will be a drive-through facility for a coffee shop. The third will be a convenience store with a fueling station, and you'll see the drainage basin there on West Avenue Q. The subsequent phases will be developed at a later time. The proposed lots meet or exceed the minimum size requirement, and access will be provided off of Palmdale Boulevard and Fifth Street West. So as part of the project, the convenience store will include the establishment of a tobacco retailer permit within the proposed store. The convenience store will be open twenty-four hours daily. Will have ten to twelve employees, and will be conditioned to ensure that the merchandise is located within display cases or behind counters. All store employees will be required to attend a responsible tobacco retailer program. Here we have the elevations, the west elevation for the coffee shop up on top, and then we have the north elevation for the drive-through restaurant facility. And next, we have the convenience store for you here. And in conclusion, bear with me, this is a mouthful. Staff recommends that you adopt resolution number PC 2023 dash zero zero five, approving tentative parcel map eight three nine eight four, conditional use permit twenty-two dash fourteen, and site plan review twenty-two... Oh, twenty-two twenty. And find that the project is consistent with environmental impact report ninety dash one, which was prepared for this Palmdale Trade and Commerce specific plan and certified by the city council on May twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety, through resolution number CC ninety dash one forty-two as amended. Staff and the applicant is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Magania. Do commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? Do we have many twenty-four-hour convenience stores in our community? Do you know?
I believe the answer is yes. I don't know for certain, but I believe the answer is yes.
Okay.
Maggie, can you confirm?
We do have convenience stores that are twenty-four hours. I will say that currently, our municipal code does not regulate twenty-four-hour establishments, so it doesn't put a requirement on what hours of operation can be.
All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak. Don't be shy. Come on up here.
I represent the applicant. My name is Ralph Depish. Thank you for putting this on your agenda this evening, especially at this important meeting you're last after many years of good service. Congratulations. I want to thank the planning department for the effort that was put into this project that we worked with along with our consultants to come up with a program that we hope will be acceptable to the community. There was a collaborative effort between the staff and engineering and design to come up with elevations and setbacks and circulations along with the studies to support the uses that we were asking for. And at this point in time, it would be wonderful if we could be approved for the project as it relates to the other phases. We're hoping to include medical and/or hospitality. But unfortunately, at this point in time, we don't have concrete confirmation of those uses. And so collectively with staff, we determined to present this for approval on a phased basis. And I'm here to answer any questions along with Barry, our civil engineer, on the technical side. And again, thank you.
Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I noticed there's EV parking spaces. Are those... Those are gonna have charging stations? People pull up and come to the store and plug in and charge?
I'll defer to planning to be accurate or to vary, but for the new ordinance, we... There's a certain amount of percentage of parking that has to be prepped for EV as well as a... And I don't know the number of EV stations that are EV stations. that are EV stations. But the others are plum, kind of like a future solar system you plumb to provide for, and at some point in time, you can just, um, um, plug and play.
So it doesn't mean they're, they're gonna, they're gonna necessarily automatically have it. It's just that it could be.
They're, they're ready. But Barry, is it, do we have a, um, a mandated, a number of? Just, just the twenty, just the, just the plumbing of, of that many? And then, uh, but I can speak for us. We're developing a number of projects. And, and then, and these other locations, we're working with three or four different, um, EV companies along with solar companies to put together a package where they would provide it, uh, and then there'd be a revenue share and all of that. So, uh, we anticipate, in fact, we are doing on, on four or five or other projects, EV, uh, programs where we do have the sub-con consultant contractor, um, install them. And then there's a revenue share because it, it, there's a cost involved in, um, and, and using them. But it's gonna be more and more by twenty thirty. It's gonna be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
No other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. I, thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak on this item in addition? Okay, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and ask for a motion or a discussion. Using our screen. And this one would be as amended if there's a motion. I'll make the motion. To make a motion to adopt resolution number PC dash twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-five, approving the tentative partial map TPM eight-three-nine-eight-four, conditional use permit CUP twenty-two dash zero-one-four and site plan review SPR twenty-two dash zero-twenty and find that the project is consistent with environmental impact report EIR ninety dash one and SEH number eight-nine-zero-nine-zero-six-one-eight, which is prepared for the Palmdale Trade and Commerce Center s- specific plan and certified by the city council on May twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety, resolution number CC ninety dash zero-four, one-four-two as amended. We have a motion from Commissioner Frogge Sains and a second from Commissioner Elise. Begin your votes. Let the record reflect that the motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you very much for being here and you two are free to leave. All right, and that will bring us to item ten, staff communications. Ms. Taggart?
Hello. Um, okay, so you did receive a tentative agenda for next month's meeting. Um, there's this couple of items on there. And I do, um, want to say that I have moved on to a different position here with the city of Palmdale. So joining you next month will be our acting planning manager, Brendan Magania. Um, so you were a good hand.
Both of you guys.
And that was all I had. Thank you. Oh, yes, sorry. And there's another new face.
Hi, Alex. You're so wide over there.
Yeah, so we, we have a, a new city attorney or a new, um, land use attorney down here at the end. It's Alex Halfman. And, um, she's with Harburn Burns. And, yes.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. It's very nice to be here and meet you all, and I look forward to working with all of you.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome. All right, that brings us to item eleven, planning commission communications.
Thank you, Stacia. Uh, the city of Palmdale is doing a clean, uh, it's like an eleven-day event, Clean California, partnership with Caltrans, and they will be cleaning up Avenue O between Tenth Street West and Division Street on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. And you can sign up online or show up. Everybody's welcome. There is a job for everybody. You can hand out trash bags.
All right.
And this is tentatively my last meeting.
All right, well, I would like to say. Thank you, Chris, for your service, and thank you each of you for allowing me to work with you over these years. I do believe, for those of you that are going to be on the planning commission in the future, if you have the opportunity to go to the Planning Commissioners Academy, please, please, please go. It is so worthwhile. Um, and sometimes they even let staff go, and then it's even more fun.
And it's fun.
Meet people in a non-work setting. You get to bond a little bit better. You get to see how other cities are way more dysfunctional than we are. And that just makes you go, ooh, we're kind of cool. So.
I want to follow.
It is really fun.
But Chris was presenting it, and I gotta tell you, I've, I've known her for maybe almost two years, right? But I've watched her project from the ground up, and she has done an excellent job. She, she, she posts it and she did, and she keeps it in, in a way that's positive and inclusive to all citizens of the entire community. And people do show up. And let me tell you, it started with a few, and now it's in the high numbers, and they're happy, and they feed them, by the way, right? After their job.
Not all the time.
She does an excellent job. An excellent job. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And we're still continuing. So actually, the city of Palmdale just pu- uh, is right now educating about the illegal dumping plan. So we'll be doing a lot more with them.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for being here this evening, and I adjourn our meeting to the planning commission meeting Thursday, April thirteenth at seven PM.